Remind you, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live also for use at another time, so keep that in mind. Okay, thank you. I ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, again, thank you, everyone, for coming. I'd like to recognize there's a bunch of people here from the Board of Selectmen, town administrators, from both towns of Whitman and Hanson. There's some people from the Boards of Selectmen, as I said. Right in the front row, we have State Representative Josh Cutler, State Representative Allison Sullivan, and State Senator Brady. Thank you all for coming. It's good to see you all, and we appreciate you coming to this very important school committee meeting. I've got a couple of things to do before we move to the budget hearing. Mike McHugh from the town of Hanson is here. He has presented with me with a memorandum of the lease agreement that we voted for the cell tower to be put on the property at Hanson Middle School. Before I do that, does anyone have any questions or comments? Mike, is there anything that you have to?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is obviously merely perfunctory, given the previous vote of the committee. My board signed off on that lease agreement at its last meeting, and as I had indicated throughout this entire process, I wanted it to be a cooperative process between the town of Hanson and the school committee. So, you know, we would like to have you, as a representative of the school committee, to sign off on that. I would like to also note that I had a conversation with the principal there, with whom I have main contact, and they are working to put together a STEM program, a presentation, as we hit into, as the school committee had asked me to roll into the RFP. So, they are working on that, and hopefully, within the next month or so, I might be able to come back, perhaps even with him, and we can give you an idea of what they're looking to do for the school.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone? Committee? Gallery? It appears that Hanson's going to get its first cell tower. Is there any ETA, estimated time?
There, as I may have indicated last time I spoke before this committee, there are some hearings that need to go to. I believe there is the necessity to go to the ZBA because of the setbacks from, I believe, some wetlands. We had actually gone through, when we had chosen to promote this site, we had gone through conversations with conservation as such that they don't believe it's going to be an issue. But, of course, you've got to go through the process, so, and they weren't prepared to go through the process until the lease was signed. So, I would imagine, within the next month or so, we'll go through that. My hope is that sometime in the spring, late spring, from what I understand, it's a fairly quick operation, a cement pad. They put the pole up, a couple of pieces of equipment to do whatever they need to do. So, I'm hopeful that cell service will be improved in that area, hopefully, by the summer.
Okay. Again, no one else? Fred?
Just if there are going to be workers on school grounds during the school day to make sure that they're properly storied, et cetera, and kept away from the student population.
Certainly will. I'll coordinate with Ernie.
Mike, there's a lot of them to sign. Can I just do it and get it to you tomorrow? I'll give it to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I've got to continue.
But you've got other things to do.
Thank you. Okay. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of January 16.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
I'm abstaining.
Wrong?
I'm abstaining.
I'm, okay, thank you.
This little show has it.
Under new business, I have a, to make an appointment, I just want to make everybody aware of it. The town of Whitman, capital expenditures committee representative, I believe the town sent a request. Frank, is that exactly what this position's going to be called?
Yeah, well, we're in the middle of the capital study, so the committee may or may not be structured as it is now. In any event, we would expect to have a representative from the Winston-Hanson School District on what a capital committee.
You want a representative of an elected official, or would you like to have?
No, someone the school designates. The way the committee is structured in the past, there has always been a provision for a representative from Whitman and Hanson. That representative could be a member of the school committee, could be a member of administration, it could be one of the designated.
What would you prefer? Member of the school committee, or?
Someone who will participate in the process.
Let me ask you, are the meetings going to be during the day or at night? That may?
The meetings currently are at 4:30 on Thursdays. Again, depending on how it can be structured, that may change. Currently, our meetings are at 4:30.
The reason I'm asking, if it was a 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock meeting, it might make more sense to have an administrator that is here and available.
It's probably not going to be a Monday meeting.
Okay. Do I have any Whitman volunteers? Anybody want to volunteer?
Not me. No, I'm done.
Michelle, did you talk?
I think Mr. Scriven and Mr. Small volunteered.
I have both of them. Would two be okay?
What's that?
Would two representatives be okay?
Sure, as long as there's only one of them.
Okay. I'm all right with that. Would you both like to be on?
Yeah, I've been doing it since.
Sure. Okay. So be it. They both can be on. Okay. Old business. We have a letter in your packet to our legislators who are here. It was discussed, Mr. Small brought it up, because he's our legislative aide, and he's been dealing with the representatives directly, and we talked about it, I believe, the last time that we were here, of sending a letter signed by everyone. If you take a quick look at it, and we can agree with the document, then, Michelle, do you have any one that you want signed? We can pass it around and sign it.
I think you have three copies for each of these newsletters. If it's approved.
One for each?
And we'll do a copy of each.
Okay.
In the letter, I also put pertinent information on unfunded and underfunded mandates, and I highlighted the amount of money that our district spends to our legislators on unfunded and underfunded mandates.
Is everybody okay with the letter? I entertain a motion to accept as read.
So moved.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? Unanimous? You want to just take the three, Michelle? I'll give you mine, and we can pass them around and sign it.
These are actually addressed to them, so everybody signs one. I'll make copies a little, the originals.
Okay.
So, it's going to go that way? Everybody signs it, back to Michelle, she'll make copies, give it out.
You know, we're going to mess that up.
Don't mess that up.
Okay. While we're doing that, if everyone's okay with it, I entertain a motion to have, open the public hearing on the school budget?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay. The public hearing is open. The superintendent's going to be giving us his budget proposal?
Sure. Thank you. I wasn't sure if we wanted to hear from our representatives. I know they have a PowerPoint.
Yes, I'm sorry, as Josh and Allison and Mr. Brady are all sitting there, they're going to give us a slideshow on what's going on and what the funding is coming from the state, so.
May we?
Sure. Glad to have you. And again, thank you all for coming. This is a very important meeting to this district, and we don't take it lightly, so thank you very much for coming, and we appreciate any input that you can give us and enlighten us with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we have, so we're getting hi-tech. We're pleased to welcome our new member of the team, and so, with that change, we thought we'd get hi-tech, and we actually have a PowerPoint presentation for you, if that's okay. I have a few printed copies for folks in the audience, and I'd be happy to share one PDF if somebody would like, would like it as well. So, before we start, maybe we could just, if you guys want to just introduce yourselves and say hello. I'm Representative Josh Cutler, representing Hanson.
Allison Sullivan, representing Whitman.
Mike Brady, Representative, the Second Summit Crystal District on the Center, which goes from the town of Northeast and through Rockton, Whitman, Hanson, all the way to here with Dr. Plunkett.
All right. So, we wanted to kind of run through, and again, for most of you veterans, school committee members, this is going to be not new news, but for folks at home and watching, we thought it would be very helpful. So, if you'll bear with us, we wanted to kind of run through where we're at with the budget process and what our next steps will be. So, last, I think I was, I feel like I was just here, but that was back in December, I believe, and we were then confronting sort of the first step in the budget process, which is the consensus revenue hearing. And that was something that was held in December, where we bring in the top economists and budget forecasters to sort of arrive at what we believe our revenues for the next fiscal, coming fiscal year will be. So, that event was held in December, and then the next step in that process is that the governor comes out with his budget, which is sort of the news since our last, since last I was here with you. And you can see the rest of the steps. I won't run through them all, but starting next, starting later this month and into March, the Ways and Means Committee will be having hearings on all areas of the state budget. We travel around different parts of the state. Obviously, education is a major component of that. And then, the action kind of moves to the floor of the House, where Representative Sullivan and I will be working to co-sponsor amendments, file amendments, do what we can with the different line items that relate to local aid and to Chapter 70, and I know you have some letters on that. So, that's where we can try to make some changes or improvements to various line items. And then, obviously, the action then shifts over to Senator Brady in the Senate, and then we have the conference committee and hopefully a budget by July 1st, give or take. So, that's sort of the very quick budget process. So, just wanted to reiterate, and I'll do this kind of quickly, because we talked about this in December, the consensus revenue hearing was held. Generally, good news, I think the analogy I used, might have used last term, was mostly cloudy, I mean, excuse me, mostly sunny with a chance of rain, a chance of showers. That was sort of the forecast, if I was a weatherman. State of the economy projects continued strong growth for certainly the first half of 2019, unemployment continuing to be low. I do see some potentials for slowdowns in the latter half of the year or into 2020. Some of the factors that might impact that have to do with trade tariffs, a cooling housing market, and both political and market instability. Those are some of the factors that were cited. We did see a big revenue spurt in the last fiscal year, and they cautioned that that was more due to what they call episodic events, one-time kind of events, and not necessarily a sustainable trend. Just wanted to underline that. And overall, they're looking at, that they term moderate growth for FY '20. The consensus revenue number was arrived at 2.7%. So, in other words, that's the number that economists tell us, that's how much increase in state revenues we can expect over the next fiscal year, 2.7% over the current budget. Just a note of caution, that the revenue figures for December and January that just came in have been off benchmark by about 2.25, 2.4%. So, we've had some volatility so far in this part of the fiscal year, December and January. So, that's a little bit of a note of concern. So, Michelle, slide. To my colleagues, please jump in. I don't want to hog the microphone here.
Yeah, right.
Watch my back. So, Governor's Budget Proposal. So, many of you already may have seen this. The Governor came up with his proposal, which is what we call House One. Overall budget of $42.7 billion, that's an increase of 1.5%. The increase to UGA, which is otherwise known as unrestricted general government aid, rises by 2.7% to $29.7 million. Chapter 70, and that's the line item we care the most about, increases overall to $5.1 billion, which is an increase of 4.2%, which is a significant increase. Of note, the minimum per pupil increment, which is an issue we talk about every year, and we'll talk about it some more in our presentation here, was set at $20. So, that's something we would definitely look to improve upon. Circuit breaker does see a modest increase, and in the Governor's budget, regional school transportation, obviously a big deal here, Whitman-Hanson and McKinney-Vento are both level funded, okay? Now, it's important to note that there was also a standalone education funding formula update that the Governor filed along with his budget. There's also a separate piece of legislation called the Promise Act that's been filed, and, you know, I think, again, I don't want to make predictions, but I think I could predict pretty, with a good deal of certainty, that we're going to see some sort of change to the foundation budget review formula in this term. I think that is pretty likely, how that shakes out and what that includes, and that's sort of, you know, the gist of what we're going to be focusing on for the next, you know, for, over the next two years. So, that's the Governor's Budget, House One. Now, I just wanted to kind of take a look at some of the trends here. This is statewide. We'll come to Whitman-Hanson in a second. These are statewide numbers, so you can see Chapter 70 from FY '16 up to FY '20. And again, when we're talking about FY '20, we're talking about House One, which is not the final budget, it's merely the first step in the budget. And you can see, you know, there's been fairly steady increases in Chapter 70 of 2.5% up to 3.1% during the current fiscal year that we're in now, and then, under the Governor's proposal, 4.2% increase in Chapter 70. So, you know, decent increases. If we were seeing those increases here with Whitman-Hanson, you guys would be happy, I bet, right? Right? Yeah, yeah, come on, work with me here.
But what do we see?
But what you see, good, thank you, Fred, so what you see is what is here, which is Hanson Chapter 70 trends, which again, show very modest increases over the same period from half a percent, basically, to 0.9% back down to, in the Governor's budget, 0.3%. So, obviously, very modest increases in our Chapter 70 formula. Even though we're adding to the big pie, we're just not seeing that necessarily translate to local school districts like Whitman-Hanson. And by the way, it's not just Whitman-Hanson. We're not picking on you. This is kind of the phenomenon that I'm seeing all around my district and in most of the suburban districts across the state. So, go to the next slide. Why is this happening, you say? Well, the answer is really is, it has to do with our enrollment. And our enrollment has been down, our enrollment has been down for, this is, I believe, I can't, I don't have my glasses, but I believe that's FY '15 to FY '20. Our enrollment has been down every year, and because of the way the foundation budget formula works, okay, if our enrollment is down, we're not going to see those increases with the foundation budget, and we're only going to see an increase based on the minimum increment, that $20 per student formula that we just talked about. That's the only way we get any year-to-year increase over the previous year, because our enrollment isn't keeping, I don't want to say keeping pace, because it's not a negative that our enrollment's down, just a fact. And that's what really is the key driver in this foundation budget, okay? So, if you go to the next slide, you can see more starkly here, if you look over the last few fiscal years, the percentage of our enrollment is down on the left, and then you see our increase in our Chapter 70. And obviously, you know, even though our enrollment is down every year, we're still getting very modest increases, you know, which is better than not happening, not being the case. But it is, I wanted you guys to see that this really is tied to the enrollment. That is the key, the key thing here, and obviously, we can't change the enrollment, but we're not going to see any drastic changes in our foundation budget until we're on the flip side of that equation, okay? So, I just wanted everyone to kind of have that sink in, and everybody to see that, because it is important here. So, what we do is, as your legislative team, you know, realizing this, is we want to make changes to the state budget that are going to most directly impact our district, our schools that we represent. And so, how do we do that? Well, slide, thank you. We look at other line items, because, you know, obviously, we want to increase the pie for Chapter 70, but because of the way the formula's set up, we know that as a school district here that has flat enrollment, we're not going to see those big increases. And so, we look to other line items. One of the important ones to you guys is obviously regional school transportation funding. These are the statewide numbers, and as you can see, in the current fiscal year, FY '19, we did have a nice increase in regional school transportation funding on a statewide basis. In House One, the Governor has level funded that line item. Now, in the past, we've always been able to increase that line item. I don't like to make predictions again, but, you know, I think that's something we'll definitely be attempting to do as well, but I just wanted you to see that, that we have made some progress with regional school transportation. And this is Whitman-Hanson at the local level, those same numbers. The Department of Education has not certified the enrollment for FY '19 yet, so we can't give you the exact numbers. You probably have them on your end, but you can see it's hovered around between 71% and 75% reimbursement. Obviously, it's supposed to be 100, and we're working to get it up higher, sort of 80% is what we're using as our sort of short-term-ish goal. And in this current fiscal year, we did make some progress, again, with that, getting that number, that reimbursement level a little bit higher, okay? So, next slide. So, as we move forward as legislators, what we're really going to be focusing on are a number of different items, one of which is what I've mentioned a few times, this is this minimum per pupil increment, okay? This is the key driver for our foundation budget funding for Chapter 70. It's set at $20. Last year, we increased it to 30, okay? In past years, I think it was one year it hit a high 55 since I've been in office, but it's really hovered around 25, 30, I think it might have been 35 one year. And so, the Governor came in at 20, as he has in years past, and we have every year attempted to increase that number. And in fact, you know, we've led the charge here to try to do that on a statewide basis. All those towns in my districts are in the same boat as Whitman-Hanson. We're just really relying on that $20 per pupil. So, increasing that to $50, which has really been the short-term goal, I know $100 is what we want to see happen, that would provide, you know, a significant boost to our Chapter 70 funds, even in a declining enrollment trend. So, focusing on that minimum per pupil increment, that's definitely one of our primary goals. Then, again, looking at non-Chapter 70 local aid accounts. McKinney-Vento, which is the homeless student transportation account, which I know is a big cost and a big concern. Special ed, circuit breaker, that's, I know you guys are well familiar with that. Regional school transportation, and also the vocational out-of-district transportation, that is a more modest cost for you guys, but for other school districts, it is a bigger cost. And the charter school reimbursement formula, which the Governor has proposed making some tweaks to this year. So, that's where I think we can be more effective in terms of making some changes legislators, of trying to see some improvements on some of those line items. But stepping back, sort of thinking about the longer term and policy changes, okay, and again, I can barely read that, I should have brought my glasses. But there is a major push this term to make changes to the Chapter 70 funding formula. The Governor filed his own, I have it here. She's wonderful. Thank you. The Governor filed his own standalone bill to make changes, and again, there's, I don't want to get too much in the weeds here, because I know you have a lot of stuff to get to today, but there's four key elements of the foundation budget formula that have been judged to be inadequate. Those have to do with English language learners, special ed, healthcare, OPEB costs, you guys know well that those obviously haven't kept pace with what the costs are in reality. So, the Governor has his version, there's a version that is called the Promise Act, that the Teachers Association has been very vocal in pushing. It's very clear, we're going to do something on that issue, okay? There's a lot of momentum there. The House and the Senate last term had similar bills, we just couldn't get it one consensus by the finish, sort of to get over the finish line in time. So, there's going to be some changes. I am a little bit skeptical that the changes are going to benefit us tremendously. I am optimistic, and I'm, we're going to work hard to shape that discussion, but again, I don't like to, I think it's better to under-promise and over-deliver, excuse me, under-promise and over-deliver. So, again, I think until we can make changes that sort of drastically change the formula, or we make significant increases in that minimum per pupil increment, or maybe adopt some of the things, I had a quick chance to preview the letter that you're about to send us, you know, I don't think we're going to see any major benefits from this, this new funding of Chapter 70. So, I just want to be sanguine about that. There was a special commission on student transportation that we adopted last term in response to some of the feedback that was expressed from you all in school committees across the state. So, that is something that's going to be underway, that may recommend some policy changes. Obviously, I know educational mandates are a frequent note of concern. We hear that every time we come, and we certainly do hear that. And there is a, there's legislation to have a task force on educational mandates as well, something that I think we, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm sure we all are on board with that. And then also, we're all members of the Regional School Caucus, and they've just had their sort of first organizational efforts this new term, and they have some legislation that they're going to be supporting, and we're working with them on that as members of the Regional School Caucus. Last thing I want to mention was just, I know this is something that Fred had asked about, and Jeff, there is a new state grant program for student resource officers in our schools, and that program was approved by the legislature this fall. And obviously, Senator Brady, who was the chairman of Revenue Committee, was a big part of that, so we appreciate his great work. And so, right now, the executive offices of Public Safety and Education are jointly working together to come up with the frameworks for what that process will be. And as soon as we have that, we'll obviously make you guys aware so that we can get the ball rolling to apply, if that's what you so choose. So, happy to take questions. I went through that really fast, but I wanted to kind of run through where we're at with everything, and I'm happy to, and Fred has a question, but I'm, if you could bear with me one second. Anybody want to add anything to that, that I?
Just one thing, we're still in the process of, we'll find out probably in February at some point what committees we're going to be on in the House and the Senate. They haven't designated what committees. I did, as a good friend, Josh, mentioned, I did serve as Chairman of Revenue the past several years. Revenue was up, things were looking good, but as Representative Cutler mentioned, these past couple of months have been very difficult. The tariffs has been one major impact on that. The economy itself is still doing good, and even though housing values haven't increased this past, or something like the year before, percentage increases, they are still going up, but it is slowing down a little bit. But this is a major concern, and one committee I have been asked to be on is in regards to the federal shutdown. Even though we're limited in our ability, what we can do as state legislators on federal issues, we were looking to provide unemployment insurance as one benefit to the federal workers that we're not getting paid. We're talking Coast Guard employees and several other federal workers. It's been very difficult. Ironically, the day we formed the committee, of course, the shutdown stopped, but there was a concern that it may, there may be another shutdown, depending on what happens at the congressional level and the US Senate level. So, we're trying to provide funding for all that as well. And again, Josh, I've got to give a lot of credit. He pushed for the last increase, and we're both on the same page, and I want to welcome Representative Sullivan. We met and talked about a lot of priorities, and we seem to be on the same page, all of us, for the priorities to deliver for our district. So, I'll leave it up to you. Do you want to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to say hi.
So, thank you for having us tonight. I did want to mention that we did have a meeting with Governor Baker a couple of days ago, and he understands the priority behind Chapter 70, and also, you know, the regional school districts. Luckily, we have on the Republican side Angela Rep, out of Bridgewater. Yes, thank you. Name escaped me. He also has a regional school. He's very tall, but he's going to be on, as you mean, so I know that I'll be able to lend his ear when needed, as far as the budget goes for, for Chapter 70.
Anyone have any questions? Fred?
I did have a couple. One, it didn't say in your timeline, Fred starts to email, but.
That's a year-round thing, Fred. I didn't have any notes from my aide about, Fred may ask about this tonight, so I'm totally caught off guard, but go for it.
Thank you. Special education transportation currently.
Special education?
Special ed transportation.
Okay.
Because right now, there's no reimbursement whatsoever.
Are we talking with, in the SPED framework, or within the regional school transportation framework?
Special education.
Okay. Gotcha.
Specific.
That would be welcome relief, because, and I, I don't know if you have the number off the top of your head.
Can I ask a question, Jeff? And I apologize for being so familiar. In all the eight years I've known you, I've never been able to pronounce your last name, so.
Simonac.
I still can't do that.
That's okay.
Is, are those costs reimbursable under the SPED formula?
No.
They're extraneous to that?
So, when, when a student is out of district, circuit breaker covers a percentage after a certain cost of the placement. Transportation to and from that placement is on the burden of the district. And those costs are, for our district right now, close to $1 million.
But my understanding that you guys carry the cost, right? It's not the where you take, where the student comes from, it's coming to the school district itself.
So, a student for us, if they move, or if we decide as a special education team to place that student out of district because of social-emotional issues, medical issues, whatever, we own the cost of transporting that student to and from. The cost of the placement, the tuition, is covered under a certain percentage in circuit breaker. But there is a, there's a, there's a certain monetary number that we have to go over, and then we get a percentage of that overage. If you give it all back to me, 100%, we solve all our problems. But it's different than regional transportation. This is special education, transportation to and from out-of-district placement.
This is again, separate from McKinney-Vento as well.
Correct. Absolutely.
You know, so, if we could, and just to clarify the thought process behind the minimum per pupil aid as being a percentage as opposed to a flat dollar amount. A flat dollar amount is more of an arbitrary number.
It is, yeah.
That, you know, right now, we're at 62 percent of our foundation budget is carried by the state. They want to see us at 42 percent or 41 percent. We're going to be in that hold harmless and only getting the minimum for as long as you can see down the road. If we had a minimum that kept pace with our expanding budget, and reasonable expanding budget, you know, such as a 2 percent, because right now, it's $25 million of state aid that doesn't expand more than a half, well, you have the numbers, and it's a killer. Now, we've got to look at the member towns, and their state aid isn't what it's cracked up to be, and therefore, you know, really crunches the budget that way. So, that's the idea. So, not to reinvent Chapter 70, but to reinvent the minimum per pupil.
Okay.
And I'm sure there's a way to say, all right, it was 25 million over so many students, so now we have a cost per student, and then go from there. You know, I did some quick math and looked at Brockton. You know, Brockton's per pupil went up by, oh geez, it's over $300. You know, or whatever I, however I did the math, but it would have been a $1.5 million increase proportionately in our Chapter 70 funding, just with the way Brockton had their increase.
I understand you're going to send us a letter on that. I will, I got a two-minute preview of it before the meeting, I'd be happy to kind of dive into that. I can tell you, you know, this is the time to be having these discussions, because this is the session we're going to do this. And I know, you know, sometimes, I understand it's frustrating from your point of view to not see things changing right away. I know, for instance, though, that this, the Promise Act, that is one of the big focuses of the education, includes a minimum per pupil increment, a minimum of $50 per pupil, which is a number we have all been pushing, and that really, you know, was because of you guys pushing us, and then us pushing our colleagues, is why, I had a bill on this last term, and they included it as part of the bigger omnibus bill. So, you know, I obviously, it's, it's, it's a lot of steps in between, but we're happy to take that back to our colleagues and try to share that and see if we can make some headway, because there are a lot of, the good news is, is a lot of school districts that are in the same boat as Whitman Hansen, in terms of, you know, these very modest increases in year-to-year, and having to grapple with that kind of environment.
When we ask our constituents to email and call, do you guys hear them?
Yes. Oh, yes. Yes. Okay. And we're not hiding, there's all, there's all info right there. Although, I'll caution, I think Representative Sullivan's number will change when she, when you move, and all of us, our phone numbers may change. But yeah, we're not hard to track down.
But you do, when we.
Somehow, you seem to reach me, Fred.
When we go on social media and we ask people to please call and write and ask for support on very specific things, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. You guys do hear.
No, no, absolutely, no. And I see people in the audience that I know have reached out to me, and I appreciate it, even if it's not always, you know, that I can't always solve the problem, but we always.
You do your best, and I will say, you know, we're appreciative.
And a lot of people even have my personal cell phone number, because maybe send those to the office, like Al, or Nate. Well, he keeps changing them, but anyway, on a serious note, people contact me directly all the time as well. And in this bill filing section, I did get a lot of correspondence from constituents that wanted bills filed just on their behalf. And some are made agreement, some are made not, but based on a constituent's asking, we have to file those, so we can do so as well. And we do hear from you. Unfortunately, last year, we've been, we've been working together pretty well over the past several years, but last year, there was two major items that didn't get finalized, and we're filing the final bite. And school funding, I'm sorry, school funding was one of them. If there's a difference between the governor, the House, and the Senate, close to what's called a conference committee, we've overridden some of the vetoes in the past, and if we have enough control, sometimes it's passed. But the two things that get, that didn't get to the final item, the most important one was school funding. And I think most of us were on the same page to get it done, but there was a few differences. And unfortunately, it didn't get, so that's a major priority, which I think, I've spoken to my Senate president, I know the leadership, and I know Josh, I'm sure, has spoken to the House leadership and Representative Sullivan, that this is a major priority for all of us, to get this done in a very swift manner, the whole way the budget is funded, as well as trying to get increased funding.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, and we will be more than happy to stay for the whole budget presentation. It's going to be as brief as possible, as we've condensed it, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent have condensed the budget, trying to keep it and simplify it a little bit more than in previous years, so.
Thank you. I'll thank you for great work on the PowerPoint.
And as I may also, we do appreciate input from the constituents and everyone here. You're on the front lines, so you know it's going better than anybody in your local district. So, please keep the correspondence for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you.
Okay.
So, as I begin this, this presentation, I just want to thank the members of the team, Christine Suco, George Farrow, Michelle Lindberg, for putting together what you have in front of you in the gallery and the committee, what you have in your packets. One of our goals when we came in, in July, was to simplify things and make them readable, understandable, so that someone could look at what we have in our district and understand where our monies go, what our expenses are, what our revenues are. Hopefully, what you'll, what you find in this packet will help you understand where we're at. In part of this package, in part of my presentation, I'll be reading directly from that. I'm going to highlight pieces of what I think are very important to us, and other pieces you folks can read along. So, as we begin, I really think this is important, that we believe our schools make all decisions in the best interests of students, are committed to providing a safe, secure, and healthy environment, set high academic standards that provide an opportunity for each student to fill his or her full potential. We embrace personal responsibility and understanding and respect for others, provide student-centered learning environments where successes and mistakes are valued as part of the learning process, support staff initiatives, innovation, and professional development, share the responsibility for education with students, parents, and our community, promote broad-based communication in school-family-community partnerships, and utilize technology as an essential part of teaching and learning. Down below, we created a motto, Seper Ad Majora, which means always towards the greater. Although it pains me to provide a level service budget tonight, we will always continue to move towards the greater for our students and for both Whitman and Hansen. Page one. Everyone in this, on this committee should know our strategic plan. Former superintendent drilled at it into all of us, and will continue to do so. Pillar one is every child, every day, with healthy minds and healthy bodies. Pillar two is a cohesive pre-K to 12 system of teaching and learning, and pillar three, safe and secure schools. Most of the funding from our school system from the operating budget, or comes from the operating budget. However, allocation and competitive grants, foundation funds, and our partnerships with area collaboratives provide valuable services and programs. Over 85 positions in the school systems are funded outside of our operating budget, and you'll see that in a graph later on, from federal grants. Some of those grants, I'm cautious, that might go away when Washington decides to make changes in education. Title I, Title II-A, an idea which is special education, revolving funds from full-day K and preschool and athletics, which are all revolving accounts, and our food services program. This proposed budget funds a level service budget, which provides students with similar services for the upcoming school year 1920, as those are in place for this year 1819. This budget does not include new programs or positions. However, George and I have adjusted for changes in our curriculum materials. We're looking at a new math program and a continuation of our technology plan, which we initiated last year, the Chromebook Initiative. It also represents a restructuring of positions and responsibilities to other areas to maximize efficiency and create equity for all of our students. One of our goals is social-emotional learning, and by reallocation of funds within a level service budget, if funded, we might be able to provide counselors at the elementary level. The proposed level service budget maintains today's educational services. This is far better than losing programs and staff as we have in the past. Nevertheless, the programs and resources necessary for successful achievement of our strategic plan require funding beyond level services. We will have everything presented on our website after this evening. Page two, the operating budget. A budget of 53, 562, 534 is being presented tonight. As you can see, we get state aid and local assessment are our two major revenue sources for our budget. State aid is Chapter 70, regional transportation reimbursement, circuit breaker. That provides about 52 percent of our funding for our district. Local contributions provide 48 percent of the revenue for the district budget. Something about excess and deficiency. We have an excess and deficiency account right now of $961,237,000. Reserves that are in the district savings account available for unexpected expenses. As a regional school district, or system, the district cannot return to towns for additional funding during the course of the school year for unanticipated expenses. By statute, the maximum a regional school district is permitted to have in reserves is 5 percent of the operating budget. Down below, a few simple budget facts. Level service budget, the operating budget, funds services for 1920 that are similar to 1819. Increases in contracts, personnel, transportation, our copy center and custodial services, utilities, retirement assessments, and health insurance. And what I'm going to highlight later is underfunded and unfunded mandates. In addition to the operating budget, the district is awarded allocations, competitive and collaborative grants that total over $1.6 million. Grants revolving accounts, and 88 federal funds fund 88 staff positions. Not going to really highlight anything on page three, as you can see where local aid, state aid, and district aid comes from. If you want to flip over to page four, which is our operating budget. The center paragraph, which is bolded in the box, the school district expenses increase the same way a personnel, a personal and household expenses do. The proposed budget for 1920 represents an increase of 5.6 percent. Rising health insurance rates, contractual agreements for staffing, transportation, and custodial services, and the cost for utilities, water, gas, electricity, and technology, numbers that I shared with you in December are the main contributing factors to the increased cost for level services. Also, underfunded and unfunded mandates from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education add to our budget. And you can see this graph below for our underfunded and unfunded mandates. Our actual cost in '18 for the district was 8.131147. We were reimbursed, or anticipated reimbursement was 2.110957, leaving an underfunded gap, and this is where our state reps can help, of $5.5067542. That's our shortfall in our budget in unfunded mandates. Page five. Our final budget for FY19 was 50523181. Our proposed budget for FY2020 is 53562534, an increase of 039353, or 5.6 percent. Our estimated revenues from state aid, Chapter 70, circuit breaker, based on the numbers that the governor gave us on the 23rd of January, 26046617. Our interest from Medicaid and charter school, 304699. Local assessments from last year were 22183526. Our non-mandated busing revenues, 50361. Our debt payment of 890983, for a local aid total of 23574870. Anticipated revenues for FY19, 50523181. Estimated revenues for 2020, 49926186, a decrease of 596995, or 1.2 percent, leaving a budget deficit of 3.636348. And again, I highlighted underneath, unfunded and underfunded mandates of 5067542. If we were fully funded, we'd have a budget with a, with an excess of money.
Could you stop for one second?
Sure. Absolutely.
Anyone has any questions as we're going through this? Please put your hand up and stop us, because that would be the time to ask the question. Or if anyone wants to go back over any of this, please do now, and we will give you a better snapshot as we go through, and you'll have a better idea of what's going on.
And I just wanted to add, if those questions come up, and we can't answer those questions here, we will answer them either personally, by a phone call or an email, or at the 20, the meeting of the 27th. The next page, page six, is, we kind of streamlined how DESI takes our numbers. And these are a chart of DESI accounts. So, you can see by account where our funds go, itemized by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, our district leadership and administration account takes about 2.52 percent of our budget. That's account number 1,000. And it's a longer number than that, folks. Our instructional services, and you can see what that is, it's teaching students, it's staff development, it's instruction-based for kids. 55.38 percent of our budget goes to direct instructional services. Other school services, the 3,000 account, is 7 percent of our budget. That's health services, that's student transportation services, that's food services, that's athletics, that's security. Everything else is lumped into other school services, so 7 percent of our budget. Operations and maintenance, 7.64 of our budget. Fixed charges, those are our retirement and insurance programs, rental buildings, debt services for our loans, 17.7 percent are fixed charges. Our Chromebooks, the acquisition and replacement is .17, and programs with other districts, 9.50. That's transfer payments to other school districts, that's our charter school, that's school choice. That goes out. Page seven, George is going to talk a little bit about grants.
As you can see on the grant page, we decreased the grants that we've received in the last couple of years, and from '17, '18, to '19. I think the ones I want to talk, just to mention a bit, is our special ed IDA grant 240. That is probably the largest one we have at $991,000. And you'll see in the next page how many people that that does employ. I also want to say that the federal government, from the federal government, we receive both Title I, Title II, and Title IV money, and that is one of the things that's in this budget, based on what we received this year. But there is some wording, and there is some thoughts that those funding, financial formulas might change from the federal government based on their review of what poverty is according to the latest census data. But what you have in here is a three-year snapshot of the grants that we receive. If you would go to page eight, you would see that from those grants and from those things outside of the operating budget, the positions that are funded from there. Those positions total $3,325,342, and that's what page eight illustrates for you.
Any questions, Mr.?
And as George mentioned, the grants, there has been some talk that there might be a reduction in some grants, Title I, in special ed, you know, we're not really sure. There's some buzz out there. So, we don't have any numbers for you? One of the other pieces that I didn't highlight, an underfunded and unfunded mandate, and I believe this came across in the governor's budget, there might be another unfunded mandate coming out as far as dyslexia testing. I don't have a cost for that, it hasn't been approved though, but there's another buzz in my superintendent's hotline, so to speak, is that mandated, and I think it's actually a good thing to do, but I don't know where the expenses are going to come from some of the new testing that we might have to do. Page nine is the all-important assess- Page nine is the all-important assessment sheet, and it's self-explanatory, of where we are, what we have in revenues, and where our deficit is at this point. And what we will be asking the committee to make the difficult decision of what we might need to make sure that we're level-serviced for the twenty-twenty budget. For the committee, and I'm not sure if you have any questions right now, as that piece of the presentation is, this is what the general public has right now, as far as the presentation. The committee has three different supplements. If you want to ask any questions, or if you would like me to go through line by line, building by building, we could do that as well, if you have any questions. I know we've done that in the past, and I'd be open to do that. And the principles are all here, if there are any questions that we would need them to answer, based on their building-based budgets.
Fred?
The one thing that I was looking at, and within the supplements, is, as a creature of habit, we used to get the prior-year request, or the prior-year funding, and then what the proposed funding is, right down the line, so to speak. So you could see what was spent and where the extra money is being requested. With this, the way this budget's laid out, you can't really see it. I don't know that it needs to be quote-unquote "line by line," but I would like to see every line that's increasing, what the correspondence is to what it was the prior year.
One of the reasons we didn't add that is because of the building closure, and we reallocated that whole staff across the district. So you might see an increase of seven teachers, and that might say, what happened at Duval? Well, that was the seven teachers and programs that moved forward. So next year's budget, you'll see a better understanding. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, but wasn't that done for the FY nineteen budget?
The movement of the...
The teachers, they're teaching in FY nineteen, they move, we closed McQuon, so they've already moved over to Indian Head, and they're getting paid out of Indian Head, per se. So it would reflect, you know, the FY nineteen budget, so the FY twenty would be that year in advance, so to speak.
Okay. We can look at that for you, Fred. Not sure if you want to go building by building, because of...
Does anyone have any questions?
Chris?
Just to piggyback on Fred's comment, I think just looking at that actual expenditure for last year versus proposed for this year, even if it's at a category level, would be immensely helpful. I mean, I see it on that, pages, page five is pretty clear, right? So we're losing one-point-two percent in revenues, we're losing six-hundred thousand.
Right.
And then there's an initial three-million dollars in expenses. So I guess that that's a big number. I think the question is, you know, what is some of the basis for that three-million-dollar expense increase? Because that's a challenge, right? It's obviously a fairly significant increase from an expense side, but to your point, we also are trying to do the right thing here in regards to...
So one of the decreases in the revenue is a decrease, we didn't include the money that you took from excess and deficiency last year?
Right.
So that's part of that decrease?
Okay.
And there's a decrease in circuit breaker. We use some of last year's circuit breaker to pay for this year's budget.
But I think the key would be on that operating expense?
Sure.
Supplements, kind of really having a basis for compare of, if this is proposed for this year, where do we actually land for last year?
Fred?
And I noticed some of the categories were changed a little bit, too. For instance, the insurance. There was a line in the building by building for building insurance, then it says workers' comp.
Yeah, we combined that both. So in that line...
Okay, so that's the building insurance and workers' comp.
So what we did was, you'll notice that in the line by line, there were one, two, three, four, five different pieces in every school we put that were district-wide. So we took their total amount, and those were figures that you had in December at our presentation, and then we split them over the six schools, so that you could get a glimpse as to what really takes place in each building.
Right. And, you know, so it's showing, for instance, sixty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. And I believe prior year, we had it lumped in, it was four-hundred thousand even, I want to say.
So...
But again, I don't know if that included workers' comp the prior year.
And that's why we lumped it into the six individual buildings?
Yeah.
Because it's spread across the six. Instead of one lump sum in the district operating budget, it's spread across the six buildings, because of the differential between employees and their insurance, as far as the people in those buildings. And instead of saying, Indian Head has twenty-six teachers, and this is the amount we pay for insurances there, we split it across.
Yeah, but that would have nothing to do with the health benefits, that's strictly building insurance, I would assume.
Right, but those were unique to each building. So what we did was, we divided it, we just put it in that line.
And then being able to see what the savings are, because I think we carried McQuon in last year's budget for three or four months.
We did.
You know, for insurance purposes. So just to be able to see it and be able to quantify it.
Sure.
Anyone else? In what I just had, Michelle, because this question's been asked of me, and I took the liberty today and spoke with the athletic director, the part that I handed out to you, it's been asked before, how much it costs to run our athletic budget? The athletic budget, it consists of salaries, athletic supplies, travel, and state-mandated equipment reconditioning. The salaries are three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. The supplies are ninety-five-hundred. That includes medical and the athletic supplies. The travel is eighteen-hundred dollars, and the state-mandated equipment reconditioning is eight-thousand dollars, for a total of four-hundred-and-one-thousand-and-sixteen dollars. The school district does not pay for the following, which is subsidized true: fundraising, gate receipts, and user fees. The athletic trainer, MIAA dues, Patriot League dues, transportation for athletic teams traveling to away games, game officials, uniforms at all levels, postseason awards, ice time for boys hockey, ice time for girls hockey, athletic equipment, coaching education, entry fees for wrestling, entry fees for cheerleading, entry fees for cross-country, entry fees for winter track, entry fees for spring track, tournament entry fees for any and all teams that enter, wellness programs, MIAA student conferences, and HUDL videos. So as you can see, the gate, people ask, where do the gate receipts go? You know, what happens with this money? As you can see, it funds all of the above that I just told you, which is a pretty big sum. So it gives you a better snapshot of what it costs to physically run the athletic department here at the high school. Rob?
I was just going to throw it there. Thank you. This is nice and easy. It's the first time in eight years that I can actually understand the budget without the big book flipping through it, because a couple of things I want to hit on. Number one, I never realized it was eighty-eight positions that we fund through various grants. And number two, and I actually just had a conversation with somebody I work with today about unfunded mandates, I was way off. Because it was just a few years ago, I asked about unfunded mandates, and I was given the number of between two and three million, and obviously, much different what I'm looking at here tonight, as far as those goes, and all the stuff that it is that's unfunded mandates in there. So thank you for making it nice and easy to see.
Just one of the things to answer, Chris, a little bit about the increases. Our special education budget has gone up nine-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-two this year, with an increase in out-of-district tuitions from three-million-four-hundred-forty-nine-thousand dollars, three-eleven, to four-million-two-hundred-ninety-four-thousand-two-seventy-eight. If we took that decrease out, we wouldn't be looking at a five-point-six, we'd be looking at a four percent increase over that, which is a little bit easier, because that's a piece of it. That's why I mentioned to Representative Cutler about circuit breaker, and then transportation. Our transportation costs proposed for FY twenty is eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, special education transportation. So that's a huge nut that we're absorbing for some of that. And as I mentioned to the committee, we are looking actively to keep our kids here, and Ms. Matheson is looking at programs. And when I said we have to maybe increase some spending in some areas, and this is where we're looking at keeping level services and reallocating funds, to add to the budget, but to move teachers around, so we can add a program to bring back some of these students to our district. And that's going to be something we're going to continue to talk through throughout the course of the spring.
Rob, one second, Fred. Rob, you're dating yourself a little bit. We were at about three million.
I know, it was a while ago.
A few years back, I know you've been here for a while.
But it's just interesting of how much that has changed, yeah.
It starts at eight-million dollars.
Yeah.
And it's down to five-million-dollar shortfall, so...
Yep.
Fred?
Are you comfortable, because obviously, that eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar figure is less than what we're going to spend this year? So we're actually budgeting less. Are you comfortable with that?
As far as transportation, that's what we're proposing this year, that's in FY twenty. However, if another student goes out, or whatever, this is the challenge with special education funding, is that a student can move in the district tomorrow, and we've had a few in the past couple of months, that require an out-of-district placement, and they're out. And again, it's a team process, it's not a parent who makes a request. It's a process. We discuss what's in the best interest of the kid, of the student. An individualized education plan is written, the team agrees on it, the team is, consists of teachers, administrators, parents, sometimes advocates, sometimes lawyers. So it's not just, and I want the public to know, it's a process. It's not where the student becomes not a good young man or young woman, and we just say, go. It's an extreme process, to make sure that it's in the best interest of the student, getting the best education possible. If those costs have crept up, and I mentioned to the committee, the tuitions of all our collaboratives are creeping up as well. So it's in the best interest for us to try to make sure we keep our kids home, and develop programs that will keep the education for all of our kids within the district. There will always be out-of-district placements, but we're trying to minimize that as best we can.
Jeff, also, we had discussed in previous years, when we do set up some of these programs, possibly, we can help other districts and raise some revenue by charging them to send a student here, if it's closer, and it also feeds that program with the funding that they receive also.
Just for instance, a few years back, when I was the high school principal, we started our transition room for students who were transitioning back from a hospitalization or something. We actually had tuitioned in a student from East Bridgewater here, who then decided to stay as a choice student, because she needed that accommodation, which was good. So it's a tuition base. We don't have those programs in district right now, that are really, that other districts are looking for. I think we have the potential to develop them, we have some space in some of our buildings to development. And again, if we're really about every child every day, and we want to keep our kids home, we want to provide them with the best opportunities that we can.
Anyone else from the committee have any questions before I open it up to the gallery? Everyone good? Anyone have any questions?
Good evening, John Byers, twenty Russell Road. Thank you for presenting a level service budget. It's so important not to lose any programs. I can remember four years ago, we did lose some librarians, certified librarians at the elementary level. It would be wonderful if we could restore those at some point in the future. I don't believe we have any talented, gifted programs in the elementary, middle school level. It'd be wonderful to focus on students who can excel in certain areas. At the middle school level, it would be wonderful to add additional foreign language teachers, so all seventh and eighth graders can take advantage of that. I know area high schools that provide Mandarin, Arabic, foreign languages. That's not in our budget right now. Wonderful in the future, if that would be something we could add. I know our high school made some cuts to the start time many years ago, to save on transportation costs. The high school kids get up, my daughter stands in the dark at the bus stop, six-twenty-five AM. I stand at the end of the driveway to make sure.
She comes in in the dark.
That she does. Dr. Jones is taking pictures in the dark, right out front. Seven-oh-five start time. It would be great if we could somehow restore a start time, maybe seven-thirty. That would involve shifts to transportation costs. But, so in reading your packet, I just want to point out, on page one, can you clarify, Superintendent? You've mentioned the word right in the middle, full-day kindergarten. I understand level services does not add any programs, so I understand we're not adding full-day kindergarten. There's a lot of conversation about that. Can you just clarify and speak to what the revolving fund is, so people don't read this and interpret it as that being something that is put on top of this budget? Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So there has been mention of full-day K, and let me just propose and say that, as a leadership team, for the past six years, I think, we came to you as part of our strategic plan, our school improvement plan, and the number-one item is full-day K. At the secondary level to the elementary level, because we understand that it's very important, and I believe it's been on the docket for the committee, it's been in the budget, and I actually believe it went to a vote in town at some point over the past couple of years, and I can't recall what year it was.
Twenty-sixteen.
Around full-day K. Let me just give you some figures around full-day K, because I did a little research here, because I know it's very important to the community. We have a revolving budget for full-day K. Some students attend full-day K at tuition, and what we collect in tuition from full-day K is four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. That's what we collect in tuition, that provides for four teachers and seven paraprofessionals. In our operating budget, we have five teachers and two pairs that are in this operating budget, which costs the district four-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-seven-twenty-five. So we spend money for kindergarten now. If we were to go to a full-day program for next year, we would have to increase what we're asking for now by six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. That would provide for three more teachers, that would take, and three pairs, that would also eliminate our four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars, two-eighty-nine, in revolving funds. So we'd be over a million bucks, or close to a million dollars, in our operating budget for full-day K, as we go. So it would be a shift in our operating budget this year of, we'd be asking for six-hundred, six-thirty-one, seven-thirty-two. I can put that out there as well. I understand it's an importance. I know that finances are difficult right now in both towns. So I did not put it in this budget proposal, but it's out there for the committee, and it's out there for people in town to know what it would actually cost for us to put it forth.
Jeff, can you just give us those two numbers again?
Absolutely.
What was the cost, and then what was the loss of...
So right now, we bring in four-fifty-two, two-eighty-nine in tuition. We fund in our operating budget, four-sixty-two, seven-twenty-five. An additional amount after removing revolving would be six-thirty-one, seven-thirty-two.
So net effect, over a million bucks?
Yeah, that would be. The savings would be transportation, transportation costs by seventy-five-thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on any of the above from the committee?
Just that override was in two thousand sixteen.
What? I'm sorry, do you?
The override for the last time we tried this was two thousand sixteen. All right. It was shut down greatly.
Go ahead, Josh. Right after the bar. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. If you run the numbers, I'm sure you have, on how that would impact the condition budget buckets, would that help in any ways?
It would over time, but not initial. Not right now, you know? It would. It would help us, but not immediately.
To begin.
So I think the initial cost is the prohibitive cost right now. In time, it would bring us in a better way, and we'd be able to recoup some of those funds. But the initial cost, the initial nut, is difficult. I know there's also some push to mandate full-day kindergarten at no cost to parents at the state level. That would be another unfunded mandate, unless the state comes across with funding. And as I presented to you folks, we're getting buried by underfunded mandates. And as a superintendent, as superintendent, as an educator, a lot of what we do is very important, and I believe DESI has what's, there's no, they're just not adding things to add things. It's for the good of the kid, and for the good of the students, and for the educational process. But some of the stuff that comes out, and we put in, there's a definite cost, and it's pulling away from the education of our students.
And I think it also hits to equity. And that's what we're seeing, and that's one of the most difficult things that we have, is that it's not an equitable situation for all the students of Whitman and Hanson at this point in time. There's, if you look from what the DESI is talking about, equity, there's a big piece in the equity. And when you look at this budget, and you look at some of the things we're trying to do, we're not equitable in start times for all children. We're not equitable in the distribution of foreign language. We're not equitable in how we address social-emotional needs at all three levels of school. And we're not equitable in kindergarten. Having said that, this would be, I think, my eighteenth year now that we enjoy this budget process in Whitman and Hanson, and it's the first time I get to sit up here, and I can't be in the back with those folks. However, we also have to work with the budget that we're presented. And again, I go back to December, when you look at Superintendent Simon Ax's Twitter feed, and his Twitter handle, he's the chief advocate for the children of Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. So he's trying to present a budget that says, this is what we can do to stay. This is what we can do to stay, that tries to take representative pieces, and that's the task now that goes to all of you fine folks. I don't envy you all.
Marshall, I take it that was what you were... Marshall, I take it that was what you were going to ask? I'm sorry, Josh, I'll do.
No, in relation to the full-day K, a young lady who's far more brilliant than myself did take out, take apart our foundation budget and added in the increased pupils for kindergarten. We would still end up being well into the hold harmless. So it, it really wouldn't be of much, if any, impact. You would see that per pupil.
Come back, right.
The .5 per pupil, and that's all we'd really see. So it would be negligible. To answer your question, Josh.
Leila Donovan, 81, Old Mansion Lane. Can you tell us a little bit more about your plan to restructure and maybe add counselors to the elementary schools?
Sure. So if we were able to do some level, our level funded, or, excuse me, level service budget, we've been able to, to restructure one of our units, putting back our curriculum coordinators, K to 12, back into the classroom. By reallocating some of those funds, we should be able to put at least a counselor, to be determined, school psychologist, school adjustment counselor, school social worker, back into our three elementary schools. And, and go to the point of George saying, there's equity in services at the elementary level. We're not trying to add new positions. I'd love to add new positions and keep where we're, we're, we're moving forward, but I know that's not feasible. So we're able to readjust how we are delivering curriculum and supervision, K to 12. And hopefully through some reallocation and a level service budget, we'll be able to do that.
No, one at each.
One at each building. That's our goal. That's our charge.
One of the couple of things, you know, when we came aboard, when Jeff came on board, was we want to make sure that, you know, we, we can address the social, emotional needs of the elementary student, and then also put things in the hands of teachers by which they can teach with in the form of curriculum materials. So those have been the two major tasks that we've had right now as we're coming in, and we're trying to make sure that we can do those things by restructuring, by greater efficiency, and by taking a hard look at some of the processes that we have.
Fred?
The FY18 supplemental that was signed off in October, I believe that there was school counselors that stayed in that when it finally came out of ways and means. And I believe that carried over to FY19. I know it was, I don't know if you have an update. I know we're still waiting to hear how that process, is it going to be a grant, et cetera?
But that. Well, that, that was, that was part of that, you know, from, from November, too. That was wrapped into school safety, social, emotional support, and all of that. So if that ever comes out, please send us that link to the.
Yeah, no, I, we pulled on speed dial since we.
Okay.
Call number one, call number two.
Yeah, it would be very helpful.
Unless I call Cole first.
I know there's been a tremendous discussion, and it's very heartfelt around town, about all-day K. I don't think anybody on this committee hasn't heard it. And it's been brought up every year. And I'm pretty sure that there isn't a person on this committee that doesn't support all-day kindergarten. I mean, I don't think there's anyone on this committee that doesn't support it. It's how do you fund it when you're in a difficult funding cycle, as we are, in talking about the equities that Assistant Superintendent just talked about a few moments ago? And I know, Dan, you had some input on it earlier when you were quickly going over it. Maybe you could share some of that.
Just basically, I mean, it goes back to the, when we had this back in 2016, the amount of school systems that have it already in place compared to the ones that don't. And, you know, I got figures here for the current polling of data out of DESI was for the 2018, 2019 year. I mean, it's gone down even more. It makes us look, you know, that much. But, you know, just the fact that we have people paying for kids and then having, some kids that aren't even being educated, so we go to the first grade level, they're already behind the eight ball. And that actually puts a burden on our system, because now you're getting more people in there to help teach, to get these kids up to par. So it actually costs us more. It's like, you know, we're saying earlier, it's, it's a stick of chalk up front. After a few years, you're, you're on the good side of things, but it takes a couple of years of dent. And the only way we're going to implement this is you have to cut. We're not going to see that from taxpayers because of the, the way that override went the last time says, there's no, no way the towns want to pay for this. It has to come out of the budget somehow, or funding from the state.
Mr. Byers?
Yeah, we've, we've talked before about, not like the, with the total enrollment, but maybe even lost students, and it could even go back to pre-K. But let's focus on, on kindergarten for now, that their parents made other choices, be it, I don't know, parochial, whatever. What was that? I mean, no, I know, you know, you hear it, but you don't, when you hear the numbers.
I can jump on that right now. We do lose, so in our area now, there are schools, there are districts that are open to choice in kindergarten. And I look back, and on our choice, we have students attending another district, all in kindergarten, four or five of those students. I don't know if they'll ever come back, but that's a, a number we can't claim, and that's an expenditure we put out. And we talked about charter school as well, and I, I mentioned this at, at the Whitman FinCom as well. If we can bring those students back, and that's why I'm a firm believer of bringing them back here, but I don't know if that's a, a number we can, we can absorb this year, or it's something that we can put our heads together. And I know in Hanson, with, with the town administrator, we already talked about looking at 2021, fiscal 2021, trying to wrap our heads around, once the budget's approved in May or June, that we, as an administrative team, we can meet with both towns to start really having a, a conversation about FY21 and moving this, moving this forward. Because we are losing students that will never come back to our district because we don't, because we're charging $3,200 for a family to come to, to school here.
Yeah, the, you know, we have, we have been looking, we have been trying, we just can't come up with a solution without cutting. Some people have been going after legislation to see if we can get earmarks. I mean, this, this is the route we're, we're put into. So, you know, short of an override, which isn't going to happen for, for just pre-K, K, we, we would have to seek help otherwise. And it isn't like we haven't tried. I mean, Bob's been doing it for 12 years up on the soapbox, trying to, you know, plead to get this in here.
That's for sure.
It's a very tough year already, just to keep level funding. Would we love to have this in there? Oh, yeah, we'd love to get this right in there just to get it going. But when you're looking at a three-to-five million dollar deficit, that's, it's hard to sell to the folks. Because it's not just parents, it's the entire Whitman and Hanson thing. You know, we're always looking at one-third, not the whole, the whole number there, so.
Well, it's district-wide.
It's district-wide. It's tough to do.
I mean, so I just wanted to mention, you know, getting earmarks, you know, that's the possibility. The problem is, you know, we've got to, your one year doesn't mean the next year.
We have to be able to sustain it. That's been a conversation.
Correct, right, yes.
The next, and it could actually be worse, because then if you rely on that money.
Yes.
And it's taken away, or you're forced off. So if you can figure out a way to structure this, so that if we got a little bit of money over the hump, then you'd be okay, then maybe we could do it. But I, I, operating-wise, it's not going to be.
No.
Right. It would be a one-shot startup cost, and, I mean, we've discussed the sustainability of it once we received it. And I just don't know how sustainable it is, and that's why we haven't furthered discussion, conversation.
Josh, part of, part of the issue is, and part of the buzz around town, and then I'm going to go to Marshall, because he's been very, very, he's been very patient. Part of the buzz around town is that there's some appetite to make it a mandated thing across the state, as far as making all school districts. Have you heard, is there any truth to this rumor? I mean.
It's a bill.
I know it's a bill, but I mean, does it have any support? You, you're, you're sitting there.
There is a bill.
You co-sponsor.
You know, there's a lot of bills to get filed, so I, I don't think that we're most likely to doing that.
That's kind of what I'm asking you.
We're in the pile.
I know the piles are steep. Where, where is it?
My, my train of thought is that so many towns already have it, that it would gain a lot of legislative support, like, it really doesn't impact us, and yeah, everyone should be on the same playing field. As I said in the email, highlighted bold with a highlighter, you know, subject to a funding. You know, subject to the fund.
The strategy is if we, you know, if we force people to do it, then they'll have to come up with money. But we've said that in the past, we haven't done that. There was a kindergarten expansion land, but that hasn't existed for two, three fiscal years now, so we didn't look at that as well. So I don't think that's imminent.
Marshall, thank you for your patience.
Marshall Tina, 100 Lascelle Street in Whitman. So just, let's get those numbers out there. There are 438 districts in the state, and Whitman-Hanson is one of only 47. That does not, it's mostly concentrated on the South Shore, but even now on the South Shore, most of the towns around us have it, too. To Representative Colas' point, brought out about, you know, maybe we have it one year, the next year, maybe the money's not there. Do you or anyone else know, have there been any districts that have implemented the tuition-free full-day K and then taken it away because of lack of funding?
No, I mean, what I, what I meant was that, you know, I'd be happy to go to that and probably get some funding, like you've been earmarking for that, but that would be like me personally, it wouldn't be something that you could count on every year. So I.
I, I, to base my basis of questions, do, are there any districts that have done full-day K and then see the money's not there for whatever, and then take the rate full-day K?
You can't do that.
I don't think you could.
Obviously, once it's created.
Once it's in, son. It's the first million dollars we need. You can take it away once you're.
Right.
Right.
It's like jumping off the bridge, you can't get back up.
Exactly. Any other questions budgetarily? And I'll tell you kind of what our charge is going to be as we move on forwards. Are any other questions? Okay. As you can see, we have $961,237 in our excess and deficiency account. As previous history has told us, we have drawn that account down and sometimes into very dangerous waters. And to re-explain it to anyone who might be listening, we have one bite at the apple, ladies and gentlemen, with both towns. This is certified by the DOR, but it's an amount that we can't go back to the towns and restructure our budget on. And as the superintendent has said to you, during the years, we have students come and go, and, and dollars exchange, and prices go up, and we have no areas. So the reason the DOR lets us have up to 5% of our total budget is for this particular purpose. Now, for the last six or seven years, we've been hitting it. Some years, $500,000, some years, $750,000, depending on where it is. I don't think if we hit this at 750, and leave us a couple hundred thousand, it'd be way too dangerous. But this is something the committee has to think about. You have seen the budget proposal. You see that we're $3.6 million off. It's a number. It's a figure. Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent are going to have to try to close the gap on their end. We're going to have to try to close the gap on our end. We know that both towns are pretty close and tight, dollar and cents-wise, we've heard from both towns. We're going to have to come up with some sort of an assessment as we do year to year. Now, keep in mind, once we set an assessment, you can never raise it from that point. You can only lower it from that point. So if you set an assessment, and I'm not suggesting anything, this is hypothetical, if you set an assessment at 10%, you can go down to 6%, but you can't go up to 12%. Once it starts at a, at a number, it can only go down. It cannot go up. Approximately every 1% that we assess a town is $221,000. If you go to page.
Last page.
Nine, yes. It's $221,835 per percentage point. So if you look at the chart, and you go down, and you were trying to get us to level funded, to, to fund this complete budget without taking anything out of E and D, you would be setting a 16.4% budget, I mean, assessment to the towns. So having said that, that's kind of where we're at, if you, if you look at the chart and go point by point by point. Yes, Fred?
Knowing the financial predicaments that our town is in, or at least the town of Whitman, I believe Hanson's tight as well, I would think that it would be incumbent upon us to be able to present and whittle away and just try and provide bare bones of what we need, recognizing the fact that we're just not going to be able to take a step forward this year. And I don't want to see us go backwards. Knowing where I think the towns are heading, and it's probably going to be in some sort of an override, because they don't have money, that we need to be able to clearly and concisely show what our needs are, and leave no doubt in anybody's minds that what we're asking for is exactly only what we need. And I think it's incumbent upon us, I don't know if we want to set a separate subcommittee for the budget, to try and work through things so things can work at a faster pace, or we get together a little bit more often as a full committee. But I think that we need to try and be able to show the townspeople and convey everything of what we're saying, and with the chip's fault, so to speak.
Well, budgetarily, I believe we have to work as full committee. And we, if we have to meet more often, that's fine. But the numbers change from the governor's budget, as we both know, you've heard from your three representatives, who are shaking their head. We have up until 45 days before town meeting to set our assessment. This process happens the same way every year. We, no one does this intentionally. It gets dragged out because the governor's budget could change, there's going to be different votes to the going on. And also, the towns are in the middle of assessing what they're going to be doing, and what they can provide and what they can't provide. So I think when we come back on the 27th, which is in a few weeks, we'll have a better snapshot moving forward. I think the towns, I know both administrators are here. Frank, do you have any input? Or Mike?
Input is another word for money.
I would say I think everyone is keenly aware of where. I needed to move anywhere.
I would say that everyone is keenly aware of where the two towns are right now. A level-funded budget puts us in an override position, not a level service. We would have given you what we gave you last year. It would be difficult to do that without an override. My guess is we're going to see a combination of things this year in what we present ultimately for a budget. It will involve a request for an override. It will involve cutting some services. Ultimately, unless we find the voters very responsive and very supportive, those cuts will be system-wide. They'll be in the town, they'll be in the schools. So you are going to have to assess what your minimum abilities are. I'm not suggesting that's where you vote to set your budget, because as we say every year, you can go down. But, you know, 16% isn't going to happen. It, it, it is extraordinarily unlikely it will happen. It'd be great to see it. I don't think it's going to happen. So while we work to refine and define how we're going to approach the budget, you folks are going to have to be doing the same thing. And I have not had an opportunity to meet with or discuss the budget process with Hanson, but this is a dual-community event. It's a tri-community event. It's the communities of Whitman-Hanson and Whitman-Hanson.
Thank you. To give an example of what Frank just said, if, if the committee took $500,000 out of E and D, that'd bring us down to about $3.1 million, as we sit today, which would be a 14% assessment. Because we haven't touched E and D yet, and typically we have been doing that. So that gives you another idea. But this is something that, as we move forward, as we do every single year, we take this very seriously, and we're going to have to, as, as Fred had said to the administrators, let's see what the difference is from what's going, you know, which things were not more than they, they needed to be, and we'll look at that on the 27th. And we'll look at that on the 27th and see if we can maybe come up with some better figures and some better cost savings. Because this has to, it somehow, at some point, go down, as you just read from Frank. The appetite for overrides in the towns of Whitman and Hanson has never been great, as it is in lots of communities. So it's not going to be an easy year. It's, is what it is. Bob?
I guess I'm just kind of thinking out loud here in several things. Number one, it appears we're always in this situation. At the last minute, we're trying to figure out what's the best thing to do with our budget. Our budget never lines up with the governor's budget as far as timing goes. We always have to rush ahead. We don't really know what the impact would be. I look at the, at the governor. I'm hoping his budget increases, but with his $20 per student, and I know we, we, you know, to work that out, that doesn't help us. I've read myself and others have talked about unfunded mandates. That doesn't help us. Last night at the State of the Union, the president talked about education in about 13 seconds and said that he was going to give 500 million school choice, which means a voucher program. So that's not helping us. It appears that everyone has always talked a good game about how important, and I've said this so many times over the years I've been on this committee, I'm like a broken record, how important education is. Yet, there doesn't seem to be a consistent funding process. And we're always in the hole. We always have to cut. We're not moving forward too much. I worked on that unit B contract, and I give credit to George and Jeff on restructuring, so we can add those three councils, which is a boost. It's probably one of the most important things we've done. And yet, we sit here, 3 million plus in the hole. How do we improve? I don't know. I mean, I've been on this committee for a long time. Every time this year, I get frustrated. We talk about budget, 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 budget. And I agree, we don't talk about adding programs. We don't talk about increasing foreign language, world language, whatever you call it. It's always comes down to, we might have to cut. We might have to cut. Or we have to level service. And it's very difficult, as an educator, to sit there and as a teacher in this system, to always seem to be behind or in fear that program's going to be cut. The school does a great job. We know that. We used to say every year, well, the kid's going to come to school, and we're going to provide the best that we can. But why can't we go further? We can't go further because I think the funding system in Massachusetts doesn't work. The federal government impacts us with their mandates. We have state testing that impacts us. So again, I'm just thinking aloud, what is, what's the answer? I mean, how do we improve? I know next year, I won't be here, but next year, it's going to be the same thing. It's going to be crunch time, and we're probably going to face some of the, some of the same figures. So I'm just a little frustrated in that respect, but I think those are the roadblocks that we run into all the time.
Mr. Boyce?
I hear what Mr. Trudy says, but I think the last two years, we really went gung ho and made sure. The only other time that, what were we, 11.29% locally on assessments? This, only one other time, and I was chairman on the FinCom and Dr. Jablonsky was vice chair, and we managed to come up with 10%. And in a very extraordinary year on a local asset, local assessment basis. But last year, last two years, I think we poured our heart and souls. I mean, I got a document here that I can share. It's from the Beacon, Jeff Beckwith, who is the CEO and director for the, and has been for years of the Mass Municipal Association. I know three of our selectmen are here and the town administrators. I don't know if you went to that, this year's meeting. Every time I went as a FinCom member, I could be more scrutinizing in what was being said. And a lot of came back to, to the selectmen and so forth. But this, and Fred actually shared this, Mr. Small shared this. I thought it was really nice. You know, Marshall mentioned the 406 operating districts and how the MMA members from across Massachusetts unanimously adopted at their annual meeting a resolution calling for at least $100 per student. I'm just only picking out one or two things because I know everyone, you know, wants to get to work on this. But I think we always get to work on this. And, and it is just a challenge to us. But I'd be more than happy to share this. And if any of the select people or town administrators know more about the meeting, it sounds like you had a very successful meeting, and you kind of took it to task that out of that $42.7 billion proposed by the governor, that there were some things that needed to be done. And to me, that's, that's great news. At least $100? They're really trying to, these are the municipal people that we work with.
I understand that, but when does that get passed? How does that get passed?
You know, and I'm hoping soon.
I mean, years ago, we had a committee and supported full kindergarten, the benefits of it. But yet.
Yeah.
We haven't been able to push it forward. So to me, that's the same thing. Okay, I can recommend $1,000 per student, $50 per student, $75 per student, but it has to get passed.
But do you see the action that's taking place now, Bob?
Right, I understand what you're saying.
It's, it's going across, it isn't just sitting with this committee. This is becoming a.
No, that, I understand.
A much bigger thing, and it's great.
I understand it, but I'd like to see something passed.
And can wholeheartedly agree. You know, the problem with the budget process, they didn't pass the FY19 budget until after July 1st. By our town meeting, we still don't have an idea of what we're getting. So we did get a little bit of extra money, and that ended up going, you know, hopefully to good use. Looks like it went out the door for transportation. But as more and more towns are affected, more and more noise is being made. We're going to be in this problem every year. It's not the town's fault. The town can only support us, you know, between the Proposition Two and a Half, a levy limit. And when you have so much of your funding, you know, with 62% of the foundation budget or 52% of our actual budget, you know, $25 million or $26 million, easy enough. And it only increases by a half to 1%. But yet, your budget, if we turn around and said, hey, we're able to hold the budget down to under 3%, everyone would be like, oh, great. But 2% of $25 million bucks, a lot of money.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
It's frustrating.
Right. I'm not saying.
It's wrong.
I'm not saying the town is, is the problem. I think towns run very well. Maybe it should be Prop Six. Maybe it should be Prop Four. Maybe it should be Prop Five, not Prop Two and a Half.
No. And, I mean, and we've got policemen, you know, I mean, they're handling guys with guns out there and whatnot, and they're riding around by themselves. You know, God, God bless those guys. You got firefighters running into burning buildings.
I understand.
You know, you got the DPW out there in the roads with the ice, probably tonight.
Frank?
Just a couple of things. The Mass Municipal Association is the ultimate advocacy group for cities and towns. They're out there year after year, working with the legislature, working with people of influence, trying to present suggestions and programs that improve what we do and how we do it. The problem is, the legislature at a larger level is doing the same thing we're doing right now. They're looking at their revenues, they're looking at their budget, and they're saying, where do we put it? Where do we prioritize it? Because of the breadth of that budget, it might be just a little bit easier for them to spread it around than we can. I mean, our, our options are very limited. We have general government, public safety, schools. That's it. That's, that's our universe. We have a revenue stream that's based on tax receipts. We have, and this is an old story, we have a limited ability to draw commercial business because of where we are. That's true for Hanson. That's true for Whitman. It's not that we don't have land. It's that we can't bring people in, in a meaningful way to increase their tax revenue. So now, we're going to have to make some decisions that, for lack of a better word, we postponed last year. And we're going to have to decide, community wide in Whitman, community wide in Hanson, what's important to us and how we get there. I, I'm, I'm not an advocacy for overrides, but I'm a realist. You know, if you can, people are constantly comparing what we do to family life. You own a house, you fix it, you pay for things. Well, you know what? If you own a house and you're short on revenue, you get a second job. We can't do that. We can't create another taxable environment. We have to live with what exists in our parameters. So the second issue becomes, how much are we willing to commit? And I'm really frustrated when I hear people say, no, we'll never do an override. Because that's a self fulfilling prophecy. We said that, I stood at this table six years ago, when the superintendent discussed a budget, we were, I believe it was 14 and a Half percent. Bob, you'll remember better than most.
It was.
And the question was, what can we do? And the answer, both myself and Mr. Caposey said, the answer's an override. It's the only way we're going to come up with the money. She said, well, what should we go for? I said, if you're going to go for an override, go for all of it. Because it's the only thing that's going to fix the clock and start us over. Well, we didn't. We voted a 6% assessment. We presented an override, flew through. I think 70 something percent. I was as surprised as anyone, but, but my response then was, fix the problem while we have the opportunity. But we didn't. We took a shortcut because we were worried about whether a 14 and a Half would pass. I honestly believed that day, whatever we presented would have passed. The circumstances were right. The mood was right. People were aware of the needs. Even Norwell, Norwell got a $2.8 million override for its schools that same year. Because people understood and were aware of the needs. That's what we have to do. We have to make people aware of what these needs are. And we have to support our community, and we have to support our schools. Because they're inextricably part of each other. There is a school department. I know it's a region. It's a department of the town. It's a department of Whitman. It's a department of Hanson. We live and die together at the polls. One of the things we will have to do is we're going to have to identify a sustainable budget. Last year, we increased the assessment for Whitman, 1.1 million. The year before, it was 900,000. This year, it's potentially 1.7 million. 2 million if you go all the way. Those numbers are staggering. But what happens next year? We have to identify that, and we have to identify a way that we can address these needs. Or we're doomed to continue traveling the road of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and hoping for a different outcome.
I think, Frank, part of our frustration, and this is for everyone in, in the room and everyone that's watching us, is when unfunded mandates get legislated, they might be good ideas. But part of the problem is, as you can see, we have $5 million in unfunded mandates. If those were funded, we would have an overage. We could return some money. There would be no assessments. If we needed 3.6, and we're a little over $5 million, we'd be 1.4 to the good. So I think when that gets legislated, that's a difficult thing. And I'm not picking on you three, but it's a difficult thing to jam down to someone's throat and then say, but we're not going to fund it. The taxpayers have to fund it. And I think that, that's part of the frustration that taxpayers have. They look and they go, wait a minute, you have to do this by law because that's what's mandated, but it has no place to fund it. And, and I think we're up against that almost every single year with $5 million out on unfunded mandates. Like I said, if it got funded, if 3.6 got funded, it would be even. We could go, we're done. Let's vote the assessment tonight. Let's leave E and D alone. Or let's take from E and D and return some. And, and I think that's part of the frustration that we go through every year.
Well, just the transportation alone is your kindergarten. We don't get back for that, for the unfunded transportation, it's supposed to be 100. That's the money that would, yeah, it's up to 100, it's 100.
You don't know, it's a million a year, and they're funding a set of those a couple hundred thousand, 250, 300.
How much do we lose in the, I think it's five something, isn't it?
It is.
Your kindergarten would be four something.
72%.
With the way the.
380.
We talked about the special ed. We've got an excellent director for our special ed. And with our two leaders, I know that they're working hard to make this happen. But I'm on one of the collaboratives, and we went up to over $50,000 per year, per student, as part of our sheet of fees and services. And your jaw just drops at that. But you know, you put out any dollar amount to get any kid, I've said it before, I volunteered in our schools, to last year be at graduation and to see one of the students from Hanson, who unfortunately confined to a wheelchair, and to be in her fourth grade computer class. And she was more self sufficient than any other kid, how she could do it. And the powers that she had were well deserved, well needed. It, it, it's remarkable. But doing it in-house, yeah, I can see where the goal is. Because you look outside in Pilgrim Area Collaborative, which two thirds of the students we have come from outside of the member districts. There's eight communities, I believe. I think we might have just also added one. But it's, you just have to get there. And it's, it doesn't just step right away. It's a, it's an excellent idea. January 8th, selectmen's meeting, I watched. Being a fellow federal employee, what do you do? You watch the selectmen and all the other local channels. And I mean that in a good way. One of them who's in the chambers tonight, the library here, I would have thought differently on his response, but I could see it in the look in his face. The selectman, La Martina, you know, the, the property tax bill is huge. I'm just a single homeowner, all by myself, two cats, second cousin that stays every once in a while. And, and I knew what it meant, sitting in a time with no money coming in. And I just know, I, I, Randy showed a face to me that I had not seen on him. And Randy, I'm sorry to just call you out without you knowing, but you know, it does, it does, it says a lot. And we care about each other. That's all. Thank you for letting me use your name.
Robbie?
I was just going to throw out, because the 27th is three weeks away.
Yes.
And I'll defer to Mr. Simon Ekem, Mr. Farrow. Maybe we meet next week to discuss more budget stuff.
Next week, give it enough time.
Get something. I mean, just for, nothing huge, but just so that, because the following week's school vacation, so I know that's probably tough for people, but.
Sounds good.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Anybody have any issues with that?
I'll be aware.
I think the committee needs to meet.
I can do it.
I'm not, I'm not expecting any votes or anything, but just to.
Yeah, no, no, I agree.
Hash out everything.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Specifically, so that I can prepare. What, what would you want to look for?
The, this year, last year numbers?
Yeah, this year, last year's numbers, yeah.
But that gives us a start.
Absolutely.
It keeps us going.
You want us to look at other alternatives as far as.
Yes.
Your alternatives?
Yes, give us some alternatives.
You got it, yeah.
And we've been creating alternatives a lot.
Yeah, Fred.
The next thing I think we should do is perhaps come up with a schedule, maybe perhaps we can do this next week, public information days.
Sure.
And as many of them in as many different locations, so that we can inform people, this is what we're looking at. This is what's being requested, and this is why. Your coffee shop, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Does anyone have anything new to bring to this budget before I close this? Entertain a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Police call.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Public hearing meeting is closed. Before I move or entertain a motion to adjourn, February 8th is early release day, pre-K to 12 for professional development. February 12th, the special education parent advisory. February 12th is Special Education Parent Advisory Meeting here at 6 o'clock in the library. February 18th to the 22nd is winter recess, there will be no school, and February 27th is the next school committee meeting here in the library, and I believe that night there is also a facility subcommittee meeting.
Yes.
At 6 o'clock here in the library. An entertaining motion to adjourn.
One thing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one thing for the committee, I'm not going to be able to get things for a packet for Friday.
No, 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 not looking for.
The agenda will be budget only.
No, just kind of continue the discussion, and that's all, it's just, yeah.
An entertaining motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone, good night. You appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.